Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 15th, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again. If you would, Member Landry, please read the role.
Samurai?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landry here. Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Paula? Thank you. Discussion? I've got a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, November 22nd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, be a school board meeting, regular school board meeting. November 24th and 25th, no school, the district office will be closed. December 6th at 5:00 PM, there'll be a subcommittee on policy. Also on December 6th at 6:30, tenure teacher reception. Also on December 6th at 7:00 PM, a regular school board meeting. And December 23rd through January 2nd will be winter break. And on January 3rd, which is a Tuesday, school will resume. Next up is correspondent Superintendent Kelly. Any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda, communication to the board, citizens and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Come on up. Yep. That's on that blue sheet. Anyone else? It's of the October 11th and 25th school board meetings and the October 18th work session. If I could get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Ted?
Second.
Nanny? Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is discussion reports and information items. We'll begin with reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Ted, if you wouldn't mind starting.
Sure. The main activity that I engage in is on Saturday, I, the delegate assembly is coming up again for Minnesota School Board Association. And that's where the delegates from the various school districts vote on proposed resolutions that MSBA then, if they pass, MSBA would go forward and bring them to the legislature to lobby for those particular resolutions. So I have them here. They're also online on the MSBA website. One in particular that we, Columbia Heights, this board talked about was to equalize operation, operating referendum and debt service levies. We joined with several other school districts on that. Just to make you aware, the MSBA has asked to amend that, so keeping the requests, but just saying that we're not going to tell the legislature where the money's supposed to come from. Because that's typically not their policy is to tell the legislature or suggest to them where the money should come from. So, just want to let you know that.
That's one of them that's moving forward?
Well, we'll see if it moves forward at the delegate assembly. But it's going to be presented that way to the delegate assembly. And then I was at the listening session prior to our meeting and we didn't have anybody come and, from the community and then also the work session.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Move this forward a little bit here. Let me see, well, I did attend a 9-16 board meeting and we got updates on our two construction projects. We had Pankala and Quora. We do have the, the, the floor is finally poured over at Lake Elmo, which is, which is great. So that construction is right on schedule, as well as Quora. Although that one, we've had a lot of rain, so they kept, apparently they kept to keep, you know, sucking out all the water so that they can get that foundation laid. But they've moved, made quite a bit of progress and that looks really good. That's going to be really, really good for our students there. They're going to have green space and everything and, the other thing is, is that we did have a presentation on the Hazleton Partnership where they're looking at doing counseling within the districts. They're piloting a program and it's for addiction counseling. And they're going to try to offer that to the students that are both identified and with the participation of their families, you know, so it's not something that's done without, without the whole, the whole student, all the stakeholders involved in that. But that's going to be piloted at one of the programs and it's going to be kind of a, a new venture of trying to help the kids with other issues that are affecting their, their learning. I also attended, I also attended a conference over at the Ties Building, which was about special education and helping struggling students. And we had quite a number of presentations on best practices with regards to literacy and different strategies that the districts can employ by using the resources that you already have, but just allocating them in a way that, that is most suitable for learning. Like making sure that, that experts in literacy are teaching the content area and using the, the staffing that you already have, so it doesn't cost anymore, but being more effective with that. And then maybe different ways of being able to measure your progress and stuff. So, we are doing a lot of this, but there's always nuggets of, nuggets to glean from different districts' approach, because they all took a part in the DMC project. And I believe we're actually getting a report on that tonight, so there'll be more to come on that. I also attended the work study just prior to this meeting and the, the chair meeting earlier today. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Paula?
I attended the conferences at the high school and it seemed to me that there was higher turnout than usual. So, that's a very good thing. Talked to constituents a lot, reminded people to vote all the way down the ballot to school board, and it was really, really shocking to me how many people were not even paying attention to the school board race. And I had some people asking me, well, where do I vote for that? And I'm like, same ballot, just go all the way down. Some people, a lot of people just want to vote president and then skip over everything else. And it would be interesting to see what the numbers are for the people who voted for, you know, the federal offices versus the, the school board ones. And then maybe what we could do as a district is to educate people, there are elections coming up, things like that. So, anyway, just to bring it up, so people would be more educated about that. And then, and then there was the work session right before this.
Thank you.
I also went to the high school conferences. It was my first time having been there. It seemed like it was good turnout, but well organized. I handle the amount of parents that were there. Got to meet a lot of teachers that I'd never met before. Whole new, whole new crowd for me and our family. Attended the last varsity football game of the season. That was since our last meeting. Sadly, watched the Highlanders not quite bring it home, but it's fun to watch. Had lots of conversations with community members over the last few weeks. There's been lots and lots of conversations. And attended the work session just prior to this.
Thank you. Molly?
Yes, I also attended the last football game that was after, well, no. Was it Saturday? I don't remember. Hard fought season by those guys. Attended conferences at Columbia Heights High School and I'll echo what they've said. Well organized, a lot of parents there, really good to see the turnout. Highland PTO had their Turkey Bingo and that was very, very nicely organized. Nice job to all the volunteers in the PTO that did that. Strikers soccer game, their playoff game was last week. And unfortunately, I missed the Paper Tigers viewing because that happened to be at the same time. So I was very disappointed about that, but my heart had to be at the Strikers game. Also attended the listening session and the work session prior to this and many, many conversations with community members. That's it.
Thank you. I also attended the high school conferences and based on parking availability, it was well attended and again, well organized. Following that, they had the induction in for the National Honor Society and I was able to watch all of our students receive that recognition. That was a very nice ceremony. I attended AMSD. I think Superintendent Kelly gave you guys in your packets some information. Commissioner of Education Brenda Casilius spoke on the Every Student Succeeds Act, the new version of No Child Left Behind. Made some interesting points. If you haven't had a chance to look at the overview assessments, it's, it's worth taking a look at. I also attended the Highland Turkey Bingo. They did a nice job. And then I was at the chair meeting, then the work session, and I also have had multiple conversations with constituents in the community, so. And that concludes my report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report this evening?
Chair Larkin and members, yes, I do. Director of Teaching and Learning, Zina Stenvik, and I have been doing what I like to say is literacy walkabouts at the buildings. Each of the buildings put together a literacy plan for this year and as part of our commitment to the plan, it was that the superintendent and the director of teaching and learning would go out to each of the buildings and look for what was in their plan to see if in point of fact it was there and give them some feedback. I've been to four of the five buildings so far. I'm looking forward to seeing the high school in the very near future and it really seems like our literacy plans are on track. Met with the building level leadership teams at the end of the day or the very next day to get their feedback along with Director Stenvik on what are their next steps, what are the resources they need to support the process, and what else was on their mind. So I want to thank each of the buildings for spending a day with me and Director Stenvik and also for spending time after class, after the day was done, talking about issues in literacy. So important because if students cannot read, they can't do much else with their educational careers. As, excuse me, my voice is failing. As Member Palmer has already said, well, AMSD had their policy conference today. It was really a wonderful conference. It was great from a perspective, from the standpoint of a superintendent to see all the work that school districts have done collaboratively with the help of the District Management Council, DMC, on really putting students first and looking at how we can shift resources to individual students' needs in a way that's efficient, cost-effective, and can be measured with some accountability. So, both the, some of our neighboring districts presented and there was, those of you that have heard Nate Levinson before, I don't know how many of you have heard him, but he was in town and he really kind of put the juice into the conference about reminding us all that struggling students are the whole child, they're not put in with labels. And that we should be teaching to each and collectively supporting them. So, it was a, again, hats off to AMSD for putting on a good conference. We have a couple of announcements that I wanted to say. The Columbia Heights High School Drama Department is presenting a play called The Elephant's Graveyard and that starts this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And they believe that all of them start at 7 o'clock PM in the Performing Arts Center and the public is welcome. For those of you out there listening, the tickets are $5 for adults and $3 for students and there's free admission for those wearing Highlander Nation shirts. So, here it's a good play, I intend to attend and I would encourage others as well. There seems to be some wonderful offerings next week. I know we're getting close to a long break, but the band and choir will be giving their fall concerts. And Principal Robleski has informed me that that will be Monday, November 21st. There was some confusion that it would be Tuesday, November 22nd, but take a deep breath, we can have a very long board meeting that night because the concerts are on Monday night. And so, we're looking forward to seeing that, seeing those performances as well. I want to thank the high school for really a delightful evening. In addition to putting the conferences on that night, the National Honor Society did meet, it was very well attended and I want to congratulate our students on their academic achievements because they had a lot to be proud of that night and Principal Robleski and his staff did a wonderful job, so thank you for that. Also attended multiple school board meetings and met with individual members of the board, so I want to thank you for your time and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Just to touch on the band and choir thing, Dan, I mean, I'm sure you will if you haven't already, but the choir and band director did a great job of letting parents know, you know, through, through different avenues that it was on the Tuesday thing, so just, I'm sure that they'll, the message will get out there, but up until just now, that was what I was understood. I'm glad that it's on Monday as well, but just for a follow-up for that, that'd be great. Okay. All right, thank you Superintendent Kelly. Next up is our building vision card for Columbia Heights High School.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Robleski and I are here this evening to present the Columbia Heights High School Vision Card. As always, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And this evening, our presentation will focus on excellence, innovation, and collaboration. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Robleski.
Good evening, Board Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Good evening. I'm really excited tonight to be able to present the scorecard and the strategic plan of the high school in two categories. But I think at the end, as we flip to the next slide, I want to look at our enrollment and as you can see, it has a positive trend in the, in the higher end going up. We continue to work on the strategies to recruit and retain our students of our district. And I think as you look at this slide and you see that positive trend upward, I think as we go through the presentation, you're going to see the exciting things that are happening at our high school that are drawing, drawing students to our school. Our demographics, as you know, are, are here before you. And then our special populations and demographics as well. The next slide is the Minnesota Department of Education's called the MMR Score. And it's based on the year previous, it's a comparison to the year before. The MMR Score is broken into four categories for the high school. That is the graduation rate, proficiency on the MCA, student growth on the MCA, and reduction in the achievement gap. We've seen an increase from the year before, as you can see, and we continue to increase the academic rigor across the school. Tonight, as we look at the strategic directions, we'll be focusing on categories A and B. And the first area that we'll be looking at is instruction. We are excited about the implementation of the personalized learning initiative of the Chromebooks for all students in the ninth grade. And we've seen a trend in the high school as the Chromebooks are being distributed out to our ninth graders. Our staff's excited to have one more tool in the toolbox, as well as the, the assistance of an integration technology teacher that is really helping our staff implement the 21st century technology for not only the ninth graders, but all students in the high school. I think it's one more area that promotes academic rigor and success at Columbia Heights High School. And one area I'd also like to point out is 6A. We continue to work hard to screen and hire strong candidates for our school. And at Columbia Heights High School, we've created, which we're very proud of, a two-tiered interviewing system. The first round is, is a sit-down table interview. And the second round is where we bring the teacher candidates before students to present a lesson. And we see a benefit for the teacher candidates to, A, interact with our students. And we've seen this process have a high rate of retention for our stu, for our teachers and our students, which we believe is, is helping to our academic success. So we're really excited about the process that we use. On the next slide, we've talked about, and I think everybody here hears about, Real Expectations, our Positive Behavior Intervention Plan. It's been going on now for the fourth year at the high school and we've really seen a culture and climate change. And we're excited for the continued growth of our program and our students as their incoming ninth graders learn about the core values of the high school and our district, that they really understand that we are academically focused at the high school and we're, we're here for graduation. You'll hear later tonight that we talk about not graduating at the high school. Our conversations that we're having with students is what college are you attending? Graduation is no more an option, it's an expectation and that we are asking students now, what college are you going to? We've also seen an increase in the high school, school-wide of avid strategies. And we've seen a positive trend over the last four years of the implementation of those strategies, school-wide, not only in our cohort classes, but we've seen a positive trend with these strategies moving forward in our school. And then, we're going to talk a little bit more tonight because it's exciting news about the athletics and activity participation at the high school. I think tonight, Chair Larkin, as you read our mission statement, I believe with the number of opportunities that our students have to be involved in athletics and activities for all students in our, our school and our community is what we have to offer our kids allows that participation, allows that opportunity for all students. And you can see we're excited about that opportunity and where we are on that scorecard. An area of concern that we have at the high school and one of the models that we have at the high school is it's okay to admit where you're at, it's not okay to stay there. And even though the last three years, we've seen a positive growth trend in our MCA scores, we continue to make changes to inter, to our interventions to push, to support all students and their academic success on this one-time assessment. And then, on this slide, we talk about the ACT. This is a focus of our college and career readiness programs. We believe, two years ago, it was the MDE put in that all 11th graders will take the ACT. And last year, there was an option. And we believe in college and career readiness and we had all of our 11th graders take the ACT and we're very proud of that. We believe the work we've done on that culture and climate of our building has created that academic and college-focused atmosphere. And having all students take that ACT, and we applaud the, the school board for allowing that to happen for all of our students. And again, as I stated earlier, the high school graduation, it's not a goal anymore, college is the expectation. And I believe this is our last slide, we're, an area where we continue to excel in. I think we're excited with the school-wide implementation of all of our schools having avid and we look forward to the vertical alignment with all of our schools, especially at CA. And we're hoping that we can build on that skill development in the lower grades as we bring it into the high school, as they progress into the high school. Now, the high school has four goals for the year. We'll start off with the first one with math. And you'll see a, a theme here going is that we believe that if students meet their growth targets in the MCA, and we'll talk about math right now, that with this target growth and, and having students meet that, we'll close the achievement gap in every ethnic cell. Two points that I'd like to bring out is that we have that college readiness math support, which is, we've seen some improvements in our math. And also, the bottom one here on our, our areas that help our interventions that we have, is our MCA Target Group Intervention Program that we've been implemented. That helps students in different categories that just on the verge of going up to the next area, we target those students. And we allow all students who want to help with their scores work on a, last year, it was a program where we did remediation after school and before school. It was a great program and we did see success with students enrolled in that. Again, under literacy, we talk about growth targets as well. I think as Superintendent alluded to earlier, we talked about the, at the high school, we have the avid critical reading strategy, which is being implemented school-wide. We are really, really excited. We have had great support and collaboration with teaching and learning. We feel that this collaboration and teamwork has really been successful for our staff and which then will, of course, equate into student success. But we've really benefited from teaching and learning and working with Director Stenvik's department and we've seen the success as we walk, as we go through the school year and we've just done a staff development last week. We are really excited with the growth in our critical reading strategies. And then again, we have our 10th grade college seminar literacy class, which is an English boost class for our 10th graders. Those are two highlights that I'd like to do. And of course, we have the reduction in the achievement gap. We have a number of interventions that we're working on. We really like our homework center that's been implemented for four years. The benefit to our homework center is we've been able to have our high school teachers after school help with our students. And then our last goal is our graduation rate. We are looking to, to top last year's success and we're looking to attain an 85% graduation rate. So now, here's the fun part. This is the achievement part and I think this is one area when we talk about enrollment, we can see why people are wanting, students are, are looking to come to the high school. You can see that we, we exceeded the state's graduation rate and in overall, we had positive increases in all the ethnic cells of last year in graduation. The student achievements of the, being honored for the AP Advanced Placement District Honor Roll and also becoming the 2016 AP School, Small School District of the Year is really exciting news. I think one thing that I'd like to point out about receiving both those award, it's not an award you apply for, it's an award that the Advanced Placement College Board gives. And so, we were very honored to be one of three schools in the nation and Canada to receive that award. Only three schools receive that award. And also in 2016, as you can see there, we have 17 young scholars. And I can tell you that I'm very proud to have 17. I think that's the most AP scholars the school has had since doing AP. And I think later on, there's a, we'll talk a little bit about AP in another presentation. But here's even some more student achievements. In the Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards, our school received 35 awards. And this is against all schools in the state of Minnesota. This is quite a feat, 35. Our senior Nathan Smoka received the National Award for Sister Cities in his painting Unity, a national award. And again, in athletics and activities, our striker team advanced to the state tournament for the second year in a row. I'd also like to invite everybody, it's Friday night at 8:00 PM. It's Stillwater High School. At the high school right now, we are hoping to have a number of fan buses go down to the game. If you're listening, students or parents, please promote. We are offering transportation, a dinner, and a ticket for $6 to come and support our strikers. We're very excited about that. We- We had a great turnout last year, and we're hoping to duplicate that as well. We also had our boys tennis team advance to the state tournament, as well as individuals. We had three individuals in the state wrestling tournament. And our journalism program, our newspaper, received a silver medallion and a Best Show in the state of Minnesota. We're very excited about the achievements of our students. And I think that's dedication of our staff as well. So for our vision for the future, we're continuing to increase our academic rigor. We're going to continue to focus on our recruitment and retention of our students of Columbia Heights District. And we're going to continue to focus on our college and career readiness. We're excited for the rest of the school year, and we're just... We can't wait to see what our students are going to do this year. Any questions?
Do you have a pathway, if a student wants to go to career or technical school, to encourage them to do so?
Yes, right now, we have a collaboration with 916. And we've had some students attend there as well.
Okay.
Director?
Yep, I'll just add that we have a variety of engineering courses and other career and tech ed courses. We also offer at the school a work-study opportunity. So they check in with a teacher. In addition to that, we have Genesis Works, where students can apply and get training over the summer to work at one of our local corporations, Target Corporation, for example, Medtronic. And so, they come in their suits and ties to school late in the morning, because they start at Target or somewhere else corporation, and then come to school. So we've got a variety of opportunities for students to focus on that career path as well.
Okay, that's great, because not all students are college-bound. It's good that we're able to accommodate those as well.
What else?
I noticed the parental involvement was less than 50% on the slides. Is there a strategy for increasing parental involvement, because that's so key to success?
Yes, we continue to work on our engagement with our parents. We have a parent council committee that we put together. And we're working with parents to... You know, we always struggle with, what is an engaged parent? And is that parent, as I struggle with myself sometimes, what exactly am I doing as a parent? Does it mean I'm attending parent conferences? You know, what does that engaged parent look like? Is it really that, maybe I might not be attending conferences of my own child, but maybe I'm on parent view every single day checking? So it's a number of variables that we're still looking at to really answer that question. What is an engaged parent? And how can we attract parents? I think that's one thing that we've looked at, as Board Chair Larkin brought up, is that we try to... Parents' time, as you know, is a premium. So we like to, at the high school, as the NHS night, the induction, we try to wrap a couple things together. That night, we had parent conferences. We had over 15 college/university and companies come and attend to recruit students. And we had NHS. So we wrapped three different events into one night to try to... You know, and we've learned this from our parents. They're like, give us something meaningful to come to, because time is a premium. I know that we continue to hear, we do all calls once a week at our school, and parents do listen to those. So I think one thing that we look at at the high school is what does that engaged parent look like? And we continue to increase those areas that we have, parent view, conferences, comboing different events together, and just trying to see how we can really draw parents or engage our parents into their child's education.
I would just encourage you to also look at the... And maybe you're doing this, looking at the research as to what exactly can parents do to increase achievement in their students? And I know there's research out there, but we try to be research-based as whenever possible.
I just want to make a comment on the parent engagement. I know that the elementary schools and the middle school are doing quite a bit with the parents. And I think one of the things that's different, that sets it apart, is the lack of an open house. I've heard that from many parents at the beginning of the school year. And I understand, you know, the teacher days and the number of days, but I think that if we could somehow look at that and figure out a way to capture, you know, getting parents in the door to meet the teachers and whatnot. Just a suggestion, something I've heard numerous times.
Yeah, and I think that's one area that we have heard, that at the high school, it's not an open-house setting, is not something that high schools usually do. Doesn't mean that it's... You know, we've heard that loud and clear. And I think we're trying to work with, to see if we can... Again, it's okay to admit where you're at, but when we have teachers, you know, when we have parents making requests, we try to accommodate. And we've heard that at our last open houses.
Yeah, I think about how... Oh, sorry.
No, thank you.
I think about how at the... Especially at the elementary school level, they're offering activities that draw parents in, because it's building the community spirit of the school. And I understand a high community spirit amongst the students, but is there a way to engage parents in what's happening beyond just sporting events? Because obviously, you can go and you can cheer your child on at a sporting or an arts event, but there's not all that interaction that might happen, for example, like Turkey Bingo at Highland. Not suggesting you duplicate Turkey Bingo, but is there an opportunity to draw in the community of people that aren't just the students in a way that is interactive? I think builds camaraderie amongst parents in a way that's unique. You might consider that. I know that's less traditional for high schools, but we have an interesting community here. So it's, in a good way, interesting, not Minnesota interesting.
Are we able to track the ACT scores of our students?
Yes.
I think that'd be interesting data to show as a metric as to how well our achievement is increasing, perhaps at the board presentation at some point.
Actually, in a few minutes, we'll be sharing that with you.
I'd like to just point out, from my experience as an educator and a parent, parent engagement in high schools looks different than elementary school. High schoolers don't really want their parents at school. So we have one high school here and three elementaries and one middle school. And it's very easy to want what's at the elementaries to be at the high school, but it looks different. And I'm not saying there's not room for improvement, I'm just saying it looks different. And that's okay, because high schools are different.
And I would not disagree with that statement. In fact, you alluded to it, Dan, when you said, we're trying to figure out what is parent engagement, you know? And are we gauging it on, when you put up less than 50%, it's because less than 50% of parents come to conferences?
Correct.
You know, and if that's the only measure you're using at a high school level, is that the best measure? And I don't know if you can do it, but you mentioned, you know, school view, you know? Is there a way to track? You know, we know X amount of people are reaching out to school view. What percent of the number of accounts are paid? Whatever, I don't know. But maybe there is a better way to measure parent engagement at the high school level, once you figure out what it looks like. So, I mean, I'm all for Turkey Bingo at the high school, but... So I don't know, thinking outside the box. I think, you know, and Ted has mentioned it many times, and as other members have, is parent engagement is huge. But when you've got a first grader, that your involvement, you're driving them there. You know, you're right, my kids don't want me at conferences, they don't get a choice. But it's different, so... But keep looking for ways that, you know, you can measure it and maybe be able to say, we do have good parenting. I mean, I thought it was probably one of the well, better-attended conferences that I've been to coming to the high school. I don't know what the numbers were. But are there other things you can draw into that to say, maybe we are having... Maybe our percentages of what our parents are doing as far as following their kids is higher than what we think?
And I think it has to be parent engagement, not for the sake of parent engagement, but for the sake of achievement. And finding ways that parents can be engaged that will lead to increased achievement in students.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Nice job.
Next up is Electronic Application System for Indian Education update.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for inviting us here this evening to discuss what the formal is EZ, is the Electronic Application System for Indian Education. What it really represents is the federal money that the school district has got in collaboration with Fridley and Spring Lake Park. Many years ago, Fridley, Spring Lake Park, and Columbia Heights came together and said, it's such a small amount of money that we generate federal money for our American Indian students per student, let's get together and do a collaborative so that we can provide cultural experiences for our American Indian students. And that worked well for those years. We shared a staff member, a coordinator, that served the cultural needs for the kids. As the number of American Indian students grew, and as Spring Lake Park started adding additional elementaries, it felt like the district just grew to the point where there's 19 points of contact that that person would have to do to do cultural activities for American Indian kids. And it just seemed to be spread too thin. At the same time, last year, we received state money, and this year as well, under the World's Best Workforce for American Indian Kids. And that dollar amount is significantly greater than what we receive under the EZ from the federal government. Also, the director, Dennis Olson, at Minnesota Department of Ed, the American Indian Director, last year indicated to the three districts that the money can be commingled. Quite often, when you have a federal grant and a state grant, they say you can't commingle the money, you can't put it together. We were really delighted to hear that, because the three districts then really felt like we could get more bang for our buck by making the money go farther than just the federal money could do alone or just the state money could do alone. So the three districts have had numerous conversations about separating the cultural collaborative and each making our own application through EZ, through the federal money, and being able to collaborate and commingle it with our state money. What that will mean, then, is each district would have its own parent committee, which really appealed to the three districts as well, because there's going to be a lot more local control and local input. As you all know, two years ago, we really started down a journey to take American Indian education very deep in this district. Not only the cultural piece, which is very important, but career and college-ready. Also, getting into the curriculum, and Director Senvik can address any of that. Doing the trunks, teacher training, staff development, sending kids on field trips, like the Badote that we've discussed with you before, as well as taking them to college visits, the American Indian kids to college visits, offering tutoring, offering check-and-connect mentoring for our American Indian students. So we're very, very proud of what we've done in this district over the last couple of years for our American Indian students, and feel that with the ability to take the lesser amount of the federal money, but to commingle it with our state money, that it will make us move forward with more power and be able to do better things for our American Indian students and families, and staff development and curriculum. Did you want to add anything? Sorry.
Okay, I have a question. What you're talking about is separating from this collaboration entirely.
Correct.
Okay. So Fridley will run their own, and Spring Lake Park will run their own, and you'll continue doing an awesome job here.
Yes, correct.
And even going further.
Correct.
Right, okay. Okay, and we do have 100% graduation rate, too.
Yes, we do. Thank you for mentioning that. Toot our horn. The other districts were jealous. Oh, I didn't say that.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
So, we're really excited. We were excited when we received the state money. We'd like to see state money for other populations as well be generated, be awesome. But to be able to take the federal money and the state money and have the local parent control, the parent committee functioned fine, we didn't have an issue with it. But it'll be awesome to be able to have our own parent committee here and continue to do our great work.
Well, that's wonderful. One other question is, how will that affect events like the Powell?
We'll still collaborate. In fact, last year, we talked about even inviting... St. Anthony was interested in getting involved. So we'll still have it a community collaboration.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have one quick question, actually, sorry. Kind of late there. Will it change any sort of staffing concerns in the district or anything? You still have enough people to do what they need to do to keep this movement along?
Oh, yes. Well, we will still be able to, you know, we'll have a little bit more money. So we'll still be able to generate the kind of services and staff and staff development and curriculum that we have for kids now, as well as hopefully be able to add some more. And, you know, this is all contingent on how many kids we have and identify. So year to year, it might fluctuate slightly.
And the responsibility you've already been doing, so that won't change much?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, I'm the head of the collaborative, last year and this year. Fridley was before, and we took it over, as well as I've become familiar now, working with the business department and filing the federal application, which is always fun. So we've got that down pat now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Academic Return on Investment update. You just get to keep sitting there, don't you?
I'll be here a while. Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, Director Hennigens and I are here to provide you with information on a few of our academic return on investment projects. Of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And this presentation will focus on the core values of excellence and integrity. So we're going to begin by kind of talking about what academic return on investment is. Basically, if we have a program or for an initiative, it doesn't matter if, or I can't measure it by just because I like it, or the principal likes it, or a teacher really likes that program. We need to actually measure it deeper than that. So we look at, through this process, cost analysis and effectiveness of the program. So the factors that we measure are costs, such as fees, materials, professional development. We measure time spent on implementing the program, and then whether or not it's meeting the goals of that program. So tonight, we're going to talk about three programs. The Personalized Learning Initiative at the middle school. And then I'll talk about both elementary AVID and high school AVID. That's what I just said.
So, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Chair Larkin. For the Personalized Learning Initiative, like Director Senvik said, we focused on the middle school. And we focused on the middle school because that was our measurable comparison groups that we had. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, focusing on the eighth grade in the middle school, and then that freshman class that has never been part of the initiative. And so, we had two groups to look at. And the things that we were measuring, we're focusing on those foundational, measuring those foundational skills, multimedia skills, and those foundational skills, those technology skills. The equitable access to technology, so access is a big thing. And obviously, we'll see when we get to that part, looking at the access that the freshmen have versus the eighth graders had. Now, this is, of course, not our freshmen this year. This would be our eighth graders last year and our freshmen last year, that we're looking at their data. So we'll have a new set of data as we continue this work for next year. Our formative assessment, which is really focusing on that frequency of the formative assessment, and then the student use of the four Cs. And we have a tool that we implemented along with this initiative a few years ago that really helps us to have a look into that classroom, both from how the teachers are using elements and how the students are using elements. So when we look at the data a little bit here, we have at the top that SCORE Legend. It's just what's this case framework, and it's a survey tool. So we're looking at surveying the students and the staff. So you'll see beginning, emerging, proficient, advanced, and exemplary. Of course, that's where we want to end up. And you can see that the core focus areas are in classroom, access, skills, and environment. So for this initiative, we didn't focus on all of these. We just focused on the ones that I talked about previous slide. So the first thing that we really focused on were technology skills. In this area, we're doing very, very well, we're advanced. But if you can see that in comparing the high school to the middle school, so now the high school ninth graders last year have never been part of the Personalized Learning Initiative. The eighth graders last year have been part of it for three years. So in looking at their data points, in the foundational skills, those eighth graders are 34 points more proficient, and the multimedia skills are 24 points more proficient. Now, when we look at the points, it's kind of hard to... Now, when we look at the points, it's kind of hard to, you know, understand exactly where they're coming from. They have their own algorithms for that. But anything over five is statistically significant, so for our purposes.
Sorry. So more proficient than?
They're more proficient in their foundational skills and their multimedia skills than the freshmen are. So the eighth graders that have participated in the Personalized Initiative for three years are that many points more proficient in their foundational technology skills and their multimedia skills than the freshman class.
Sorry.
So typically, you would see, the older kids should be more proficient. But our younger kids are in the grade before are more proficient because of the work that we're doing, or we hope, because of the work directly we're doing with this initiative.
Okay. Thank you.
So formative assessment, we talk a lot about data and the importance of data when you're talking about personalizing your learning for the students. So the formative assessment is very key. You can see at the ninth grade, we had a score of 940 and a 1035 at the eighth grade. That's 95 points higher. So you can see that our work with that Personalized Learning Initiative and focusing on form assessment and data has a very high impact in those, in what's happening in the classroom at the eighth grade level versus the freshman level. So the orange, if you recall back to that case framework, is proficient. So anything in the orange is proficient. I think it looks orange up there, yes. So in the four Cs, if you recall, those of you who've been around for a little while, previous to the Personalized Learning Initiative, we started talking about the four Cs a lot, and the importance of collaboration, creativity, communication, and critical thinking. And like I said before, five points are higher, statistically significant. So again, in this area, you can see that we have a measurable statistic significance between our freshman kids and our eighth graders. And finally, in access. And we would assume to see access significantly higher, because those freshman kids do not have a one-to-one assigned device, but those eighth graders last year did. So it's telling that we see an advanced at the eighth grade level versus the high school. Though you can tell at the high school, we still have significant access to technology even before the initiative got there. So those were those four points that we looked at. So in looking at those four goals for the initiative, and are we meeting the program goals and implementing, obviously, we can say, "Yes, we are," because we have statistically significant increases in between our freshman kids and our eighth grade kids. The cost per year, so it's part of the academic return on investment, and looking at costs. So for the 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, you can see the costs don't change a lot. Now, we're just focused on the middle school for the Personalized Learning Initiative costs. And we know this year, we're in the fourth grade and we're in the ninth grade. And those costs dip down quite a bit once you expand, or I shouldn't say quite a bit, but they do dip down, once you expand, just because of staffing. There's a, you know, because you're spreading that staffing cost over more students. So the device costs aren't really changing. You know, they're increasing, but that staff cost is a big thing, a big piece, the staff and the devices. So that disperses out and brings that price down. So that primary funding stream is through the Capital Projects Levy. So we started the Personalized Initiative, Learning Initiative without it, but we could not continue it without the Capital Projects Levy. So that's the primary funding source for this program. So looking at the data, our recommendation would be to continue personalized learning as we are, and continue expanding. And we've been expanding by two grade levels a year, so we anticipate to continue that until we get to our goal of grades three through 12. So that's the Personalized Learning Initiative.
All right. So we will focus now on AVID Elementary. For the purposes of studying the data, we took a measure at the Valley View program because they've had it for a few years now, and so we were able to really look at the implementation and compare it. So the measures that we use are, the program has four essentials and a rubric, so I'll show you that in a minute. The costs. We also don't wait until the end of the year to measure it. We have monthly meetings and check-ins. Principals do monitoring and evaluation with a checklist as well. So I'll show you. So each year, the site has goals that they set. So for last year, Valley View's school-wide AVID goals were on reflective writing and pushing that into science class, not just in the classroom, but also in the lab. Comprehensive professional development, they decided to expand down to grades K1 and 2 with that professional development and make it fully school-wide. They need to meet quarterly as a full site team, so weekly and monthly, they meet as a grade-level team. But then we've selected AVID leaders at the, or they self-selected, AVID leaders at the school for that site team. And then sharing information about AVID with families is also one of the rubric measures. So I'm going to show you what that looks like on the four essentials and how we go about collecting that data. So the first of the four essentials is on instruction. So here you can see a snapshot of the rubric. This rubric, we actually take a formal measure in the beginning of the school year, and then again at the end of the school year, to see where we're at, with that monitoring throughout each month. So here you can see, again, we're looking at last year AVID program, and the measure, the measures or the metrics are zero, so not AVID. One is meeting certification standards. This is information that we have to submit to the AVID Center, the National AVID Center every year, in order to be certified every single year. So level one meets certification. Level two, we've moved into routine use. And then level three, it's institutionalized. So here you can see for each of the, this is just one component of the first essential. So 1.1, essential 1.2 on note-taking, again, at a level three level. And now, in a new AVID site, you wouldn't see this. You would see a zero or a one to begin with, and then we incrementally move along. So this is something we've been measuring for the last few years at Valley View. Essential one, levels of thinking. Majority of teachers at the site are trained on using CASA's levels of thinking and are implementing them, based on our walkthroughs and our data collection. Essential one, next component is collaboration. So providing opportunities and structures for students to work collaboratively. Essential one, number five, organization. So this is at routine use. One or more AVID elementary teachers at two or more grade levels are providing opportunities for the organization. So I know you've seen the binders and the planners, and I've got some photos of that. So like I said, we just started with K in one, so we couldn't say every single grade Essential one, using reading strategies. Superintendent Kelly earlier talked about literacy and our literacy work, and that is directly aligned to AVID as well. So we ask either teaching and learning, the principal, or the teachers, take photos as well and upload them, so we have them all into a central location. We used to do this many years ago on paper and had these big binders for each of them. Now we can do it all electronically and really get to see the work that kids are doing. So you can see the kids taking notes, their organizational planner and binder, and then CASA's levels of thinking, their level one, two, and three. So the second essential is culture. So really looking about that college-going culture across the building. So safe and challenging environment, that's at a level three. Grouping patterns, also at a level three. This means that kids aren't always in the same math group every single week, right? Based on their data, based on their needs, kids are in flexible groups. And that's really part of the mission of AVID, is closing that achievement gap and not having that stagnant group, but really flexible grouping, so kids have lots of opportunities. Home and school workshops. This is something that the teachers do outreach with the parents. Teaching and learning goes to the open houses and does AVID presentations at the school. We're on hand for them. Different ways of outreach. They have a newsletter where they put some information that way as well. And then also, information goes home daily in the binders, and parents are signing the planners every single night. So with this, we've been able to do family communication to every single student who's bringing the binder home. Sometimes we have colorful stickers that go in there with information on them, or flyers or whatnot. Number two, accountability. So we're at routine, level two. So here's some evidence. You can see in the lower right-hand corner, many of the AVID classrooms, or the classrooms at Valley View have data walls, where the students are tracking their own data or their classroom data. Superintendent Kelly and I walked through and noticed that they were measuring reading stamina. So on the first day of school, how many minutes can a third grader read alone independently, right? And then continuing to track it throughout the weeks, because we know they have to build that stamina up, right? So other checklists. And then the photo of the students, are students doing a Socratic seminar, which we used to typically limit to the high school as a very high academic activity. And students all the way down to the elementary level, they can handle it. They can do it. The third essential, third of four essentials, is leadership. So we are at level two for attending the Summer Institute. Principal Fort has attended and has met qualifications. We've had a little bit of turnover in the last few years with the dean position at Valley View. And so this summer, the dean will be attending Summer Institute, and we'll be able to put that right back up. The site team, so it's for routine use there, meets at least monthly to collaborate. For administrator articulation, we're at a meet certification standard, so this would be a goal area for us to have the administration make sure that they're voicing across the building, across with the staff, from the administrator, about AVID strategies. Right now, our site team does a lot of professional development at the school, the lead staff development during a staff meeting, or the teaching and learning staff goes down. But this is really pushing that the teacher, or the school administration to be also that lead learner, so. Site team plan, every year, we have to turn in a site team plan, so we're at routine use there. Attending the Summer Institute, this is an interesting measure, because, you know, technically, we only have AVID in grades three, four, and five there. Second-grade teachers have attended. And so as we continue to grow at the school and as the years go by, this will be able to increase. So some evidence, we asked them to collect evidence each time. So here you can see a walkthrough with feedback from the principal to the teacher, and then our monthly meeting area. The last essential of the four is systems. So for administrator resources, we're at a level three. So this is really, Valley View has done an exceptional job of going into the classrooms with those walkthrough forms and having those conversations, and attending every single month the AVID meetings that we have there. Site-level data, the administrator, again, as I mentioned, we've had a little bit of changeover in the dean position. So this has been a collaboration between teaching and learning and the site, which is great. We're at routine use. The next one is assessments at institutional level. So really looking, I showed data a little bit earlier, looking at the data. Students are tracking their own personal data, classroom data. Teachers are looking at data. And then SMART goals. So again, at institutionalization. Some of the evidence, what you see at the bottom, this is our district AVID site for, it's a resource site for teachers. So teachers in the district, it's a secure site, can log on and see, get resources. This is where we keep all of the meeting notes. This is where we house all of the data that we're collecting. And so it's all there for you. So if I'm a third-grade teacher, I can peek in and see what the fourth-grade meeting was about or what their goals are, because I know I'm sending my students to that grade level next year. So this is a way for us to do that. A couple nights ago, we had a vertical AVID meeting. We have three a year. And where we talked about these feeder patterns, and so really looking at the whole system. Now that, for this year, now that all of our schools have AVID, it's really important. And we actually had kindergarten teacher attend all the way up to high school representation, and every school attended. So we're having this system-wide conversation. Okay. So the costs and benefits, are we meeting the program goals? As you can see, based on all of the multiple measures that we've done, we are meeting the program goals. The cost per pupil at the elementary program, the costs have gone down over the last few years, largely in part because the national conference, where the major portion of the training happens, used to be out of town. They have brought the Summer Institute to the Twin Cities. So that's been a big cost saver for us. Also, similar to the personalized learning, as we expand, it kind of dilutes the cost among the staff. And again, AVID is largely funded in our district through the Achievement and Integration Grant as an approved activity. So the recommendation is to, based on the data, is to continue and expand the AVID Elementary program. The high school AVID program, they actually have 11 essentials, not four. But I promise you, we won't go over all of them, okay? Just wanted you to know that they have them. So we measure, similar to the elementary, instead of measuring the four areas, we measure the 11 areas. We look at the costs. The administrators have a similar walkthrough form where there's checklists, and we have the monthly site team goals. This year, the site team for the high school has really grown. So we're really excited about that. And every time they meet, they check in on, what are the goals? What's our plan? Where are we at? And so oftentimes, we're able to say, "I think we've met that goal, and so what's a new goal for us for this year?" So taking a quick peek, that website, that secure site that I mentioned, this is how the high school uploads all of their data. So they click onto a link and they upload their information there for all of the different 11 essentials. And then again, the high school binders and planners, they're just spot-on and experts. And this is something that we measure in the AVID classroom. I walk into every classroom and start looking through their planners and binders and seeing what they're up to. AVID is a lot about collaboration and kids really using the critical thinking skills. So here's some evidence of this. This is a reflection after they do their tutorials with the college students. They also have pre-work to do before the tutorials, and then working with the college tutor to solve those problems. I'm proud to inform you that AVID has been, or the high school AVID program is highly certified. So again, we submit all of our data collection to AVID Center, the National Center, every year, in order to get certification. So for the second year in a row, we are highly certified, which is great. Some of the commendations are that the students continue to take rigorous coursework, the AVID elective teachers are using the WICAR, which is Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading Strategies. We have a strong partnership with the University of Minnesota. And this year, I'm proud to also inform you that we've hired a few more graduates. So in the past, we've had one or two of our graduates, and again, they keep coming. So it's great to see students who are, who just graduated, who are in college, who need some money, who know AVID really well and know the school really well, come back and help us facilitate those tutorials. Some of the recommendations are to continue to build the capacity of the site team. And I mentioned, this year, we're really recruiting additional teachers. We want as many voices. We have special education teacher on the site team this year. It's important to have all of our voices. And just as Principal Robleski mentioned earlier, the WICAR implementation, school-wide, particularly with the Critical Reading Strategy. I have done my literacy walkthroughs at the high school, and I see evidence of this in every classroom I go to. It's been, I've been impressed. So based on the data, are we meeting fidelity of the program? Yes. The cost per pupil, it's a little bit more expensive for the high school program as compared to the elementary, because remember, they have their own class, so it's an AVID classroom. So this takes into account funding that portion of the FTE, as opposed to in the elementary, where every student, every classroom is an AVID room. It's not a separate class. And again, funded through Achievement and Integration. Here you see, again, a significant drop in the cost per pupil, because we are, again, able to attend professional development right here in the Twin Cities. And we have, boy, do we have four trained trainers in district now as well. So we're able to do a lot more. So the recommendation, based on the data, is to continue the AVID secondary program. We've already expanded to grades nine through 12 as much as we can, and so just to continue the program is the recommendation.
Any of the three return investment presentations?
Do you have a measure of cost effectiveness that you use or are you just, after looking at all the data, determine it's cost effective?
Since, I'll just say that based on our work with DMC and going through, they held our hands the first time we went through and so we do use the measures that they gave us and their guidance in order to determine that.
I was gonna say, there's really no hard, fast, definitive, this is exactly what it is for, that just encompasses all programs. So it's something that each program has its kind of own uniqueness as far as what we need to look at for whether it's cost effective or not. I think really when you're looking at, are we achieving our goals and are we significantly achieving our goals and what's the cost in the bottom line compared to other programs we're using? And in these programs, you see that we are significantly achieving our goals and at a high rate and we're showing success with them. So it really shows, I think, that we're being cost effective in the programming that we're implementing.
My concern is that, and I'm glad we're achieving the goals so well, but the concern, and I'd like to see measured if possible and I don't know either how to measure it, but are we overspending to achieve those goals? Are we putting more money towards those goals than is prudent? And that's usually what a cost, a return on investment measures. And if that, if we can measure that, I think it would be huge.
You said you're expanding two grade levels? Which two grades?
Yep.
What grades?
So it had the final, this year, we expanded to fourth and ninth. Next year, it gets a little bit more unique as far as how we're gonna expand, so we're still kind of in discussion on how we're gonna branch that out. But we know based on costs, it's two grade levels a year, so we got two more years to achieve our final goal of grades three through 12. And so how we get to that, we need to make sure that it's the most efficient way or effective way, I should say, for the buildings themselves.
And right now, it's all Columbia?
Four through nine.
So fourth, fifth?
Fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, yep.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Just a comment, I can't wait till we expand personalized learning with the results that you've shown here tonight, it seems like that is so effective, so it's positive.
It's fun to have the community partnership and that levity to the backing of the community.
Yep.
Because we do need to be good stewards of the money that we receive from the public.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thanks, Kay.
Thank you.
Advanced Placement, College Board Curriculum, and ACT Score Updates.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm here with Principal Robleski and I'm happy to introduce Desa Faebek, our District Assessment Coordinator. This evening, we're going to provide you with an overview of Advanced Placement, looking at, also provide some data on AP or Advanced Placement along with ACT. So of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner and this presentation will focus on the core values of excellence and collaboration. So the college, we are, AP or Advanced Placement Programs is part of the College Board. So the College Board actually provides many different programs and different types of assessment that offer college success, opportunities for kids. Currently, seven million students have access to one of the many different programs that College Board offers. So here in Columbia Heights, we of course have Advanced Placement Courses and then the Advanced Placement Assessments that come along with them. So why take AP is the big question, right? So the big, an easy answer is free college credit, right? Also, we find that students are taking the challenge and want to take on that rigorous coursework and enjoy the subject matter, enjoy thinking like a college student. So, and then once they get into college, having some college credit under their belts, they have more flexible college schedules and they walk into colleges in their first year already with that experience behind them. So academically, financially, and socially emotionally as well, they are really well prepared by taking AP. So the Advanced Placement, really its purpose is to pursue, to prepare students to pursue the college-level studies. That means they have the opportunity to earn college credit while they're still in high So last year in the United States, four million AP exams were taken and with that, the students indicate what universities they want to send their scores off to and so nearly 4,000 universities, both here in the United States and internationally, received AP scores from students in our country. So as you can see, national, international, it's a big, big program. So a quote from some AP, former AP students saying, "The AP courses I took were definitely a lot harder than my regular courses, so I was able to handle the pressure in college and AP helped me save a lot of money, which is a big issue now that I'm paying my own way through college." So again, earlier in the evening, Principal Robleski talked about, our goal isn't simply high school graduation, but it's exactly what the student is stating, preparedness for college and being able to be successful after high school. Little bit more about Advanced Placement. So again, there are college-level courses that are offered in high school. It's the equivalent of an introductory college course. Students have the opportunity and they're highly encouraged to take the AP exam at the end of the course and if they get a score of three or higher, that will typically earn them college credit.
Based off the last bullet on the last slide, you can see the number of students over time that have scored three or higher and have received college credit since 2011. One thing that we are very excited about and take pride in and we want to thank the school board for supporting us in the number of 14 different AP offerings at the high school. Our students of Columbia Heights have 14 different choices for AP courses and for a small school as we are, that's quite an offering and our students have choice.
May I add, it's also a huge offering for big schools.
Yes.
So, I mean, that doubles how big it is here.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Even for bigger schools?
Yeah, even for big schools, it's like wow. So it's double wow here.
I'm going to just interject and say, thank you for making that comment because I was at one point meeting with the superintendent of Anoka and the former superintendent of Anoka and he heard about the number we were offering here and he said, "We don't even do that many in Anoka." So, and that's a huge district.
Because it takes a lot of resources to run an AP program. Yeah.
And just to piggyback on that, that's the commitment that we have to post-secondary education for our students here at Columbia Heights. And I think that's one thing that, as you look at Columbia Heights High School, you can say that 14 different offerings of a little school of our size.
So as you know, in order to prepare students to be successful in AP or in life in general, we are offering currently a ninth-grade college math seminar boost class. So that's really ensuring that our kids have the foundations of algebra. We know algebra is key, it can be a gatekeeper if kids don't have that foundation. But then it also affords the instructors the opportunity to provide that individualized instruction based on each of the students' needs. So this is in addition to a math class that the kids would already be taking. So it's a way to provide interventions, that second scoop. So students are selected, many students are selected in, to be in this class. I don't have the number of classes on top of my head, that's why I'm looking at you, that's okay. This year is our first year offering the 10th grade equivalent for the English, English and reading. So again, this course is in addition to an English class. Students are learning the foundations of academic English. We selected to use this, what's called Spring Board. So again, this is another program offered under the umbrella of the College Board. So Spring Board is a rigorous curriculum that is designed to prepare students to access AP and advanced courses. So this isn't a, it could be a remedial or lower level, but we don't do that. We, our goal is to prepare kids up and so again, students have a rigorous curriculum, but the teachers are able to provide that personalization and that individualization. So the teaching and learning staff meet with both of the teachers who are offering this class to really talk about how to differentiate for students in this class so that they can access this rigorous curriculum while they're still in 10th grade.
The unique points on this slide is you can see in blue, the total number of students who are in AP, but then you look at the number of tests taken. So that will tell us and give us an indication that our students are taking more than one AP course at the high school. So they are challenging themselves with more than just one AP class.
Do you typically have students taking tests even though they're not in the class?
What we've done is if you're, we've changed the philosophy of the high school. We ask students that if you've signed up for the AP course, that means you're going to take the AP test. And we've challenged our students and I think one thing to point out, in 2015, when we did receive that award, is that we did challenge our students that every student who was in an AP course to take that test. And I think when you set that expectation of high rigor, you can see that our students met the challenge. So what happened was, we doubled the number of students or the number of test scores or tests that were taken and then we increased our percentage by 16 points on the test. When you increase the number of tests, research will show you that if you increase the number of students taking a test, your test scores will drop, not increase. And we did just the inverse to receive that award.
I'll just add that we did have a handful of students take the Spanish language. They were native Spanish speakers and though they were not in the AP Spanish class yet, they did opt to take the test. It was just a small number of students, but we did have a handful last year. That's not common, but it is an option.
Okay, yeah.
Sometimes for the, sometimes for example, for the chemistry, the AP chemistry class, we may not have a full class of students, but we do have a handful of students who work and the teacher supports them to prepare for that. Same with like AP Art History, although they are technically in the class. So it, we do have a few students that that is the case for.
So you do allow students who are not registered for the class to go ahead and take the test if they're doing, taking care of their preparation otherwise?
Yep.
Correct.
Again, some of the benefits of AP are that free college credit, but aside from that, even, we say even if a student at the high school, we say even if a student receives a score of two on that test, so maybe they're not gonna get the free college credit, they've learned so much. They have been prepared for college, they've learned skills that they'll be able to keep for a long time. They work hard though.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, superintendent. It's an honor to be here and I'm just gonna talk briefly a little bit about the AP exam details. And so the College Board does set these dates in advance and so we know that this year, they will be from May 1st to May 12th, 2017, and that's something we cannot deviate from and they have specific times and students need to arrive at certain times to take them. And they're typically two to three hours depending on what AP course it is. For example, the art is a little bit different, they're submitting something a little bit differently. And then it can be a variety of responses, so free response, some are essays, problem solving, oral responses in some cases for like the language, and we have different ways of documenting that as well.
We're gonna move to one slide on ACT preparation. So we're mixing a little bit ACT and AP and I did that because as we're preparing students for that ACT, College Entrance Exam, all of those skills that they're learning also are coupled with test-taking skills and that kind of preparation for AP. So we're gonna do a little bit of both right now. So I guess we could just call it rigorous exam preparation at the school. Includes Naviance, which is a software for college and career readiness. This, with the software, students take, in eighth grade, take a career interest inventory and then we have a component for ACT prep. Avid 11th grade and really I put Avid K-12 is preparing students for these high-level thinking and rigor. I mentioned stamina earlier, they need that. Our advisory program is called Ramp Up to Readiness, it's through the University of Minnesota. That is a way to ensure that all students are hearing about college and what it takes, how to enroll, how to, you know, what are scholarships, all of the kind of fundamental and basics around college. And then a potential, we'll come back at a later date to propose a potential 11th-grade ACT seminar, one semester course, that would allow preparation for each student as well. Back to AP, sorry.
No problem. So for AP costs, that's something that we are really aware of with our student population and what they're able to have access to. And so for this coming school year, there was a slight increase, it will be $93 according to the College Board for all students in the US, US territories and Canada, and there's some outside fees for students outside of the States or Canada. And we are really excited to announce that for our students, if they are free and reduced lunch eligible, it will be $15. And if they're unable to pay for that, because some of these students, like Principal Robleski said, are taking multiple AP exams, we're definitely able to work with them on that. And $42 for the non-free and reduced eligible students. And again, if they're taking multiple or have maybe twins or triplets in the grade taking multiple, we're able to work with them as well.
I just can't talk enough about the benefits of access to rigorous coursework. Again, those critical thinking skills, confidence in our students, they learn that time management, study skills, and then of course, the college savings.
And again, as we look at this slide, you can see the trend of since 2013 and to this, to top off with 17 AP scholars.
And here they are again.
So then, as Director Stenvik had touched on, so ACT, we're looking a lot at those numbers and helping our students feel successful on that and hopefully maybe potentially supporting them in the class day with this as well. But the number of students taking the ACT is continuing to increase, which is really exciting for us. It was mentioned that maybe not all students are college-ready, but sometimes seeing their scores on this can make them, give them a little bit more hope and excitement towards college or something, a career that they could be successful in.
Do you wanna talk about the?
Sure. Also, our composite score, for 2015 for our ACT, it was 18.6 for an average and that was with 186 students taking that. With that increase to 212, as Principal Robleski talked about, we did see a slight decrease. It was less than the state average decrease though and that was to 17.3, which is a 1.3 point decrease. However, the state did decrease by 1.6, so we still see that as a positive.
So again, with the number of students, virtually all of the 11th grade students are taking the ACT in many schools around the country, it's just a select group of students taking the ACT. So students that we, that we work with and who are taking the advanced courses and whatnot are achieving at high levels, we have a range of kids in our entire 11th grade class of scores. So as Principal Robleski mentioned, we were named the AP Small District of the Year for 2016. And if I could just take two to three minutes to show the video, I know many of you at the board have seen it, but I think it would be great to show. It's gonna just take a second. See if it works, Dan. It might not work. It might not work.
While they're working on the video, coming up, if it does, it does, if it doesn't, it does not. We can show it another time or tell us how to access it. I was contacted by the College Board as a superintendent to sit on their National Superintendent Advisory Board. I'm contemplating that, it's a two-year commitment. Whether I do that or not, it really is compliments to this district, to the students and to the staff that we have done so well, that nationally they want to garner advice from us as a small school district. So just wanted to inform you that, let you know if, if we're going to honor that commitment or that ask, but it was quite an honor to receive that letter and that phone call. How are we doing with the video?
I think that I, I think this computer is not quite yet connected to the internet, so we'll postpone it for a different time.
Yeah, very good.
So if there's any questions?
I was wondering, when you said that the students are challenged to take the AP test if they take the course, is it a requirement or can they opt out or still, or just to be clear?
If, if they choose to opt out, they, they can opt out.
Okay.
It's highly, do they?
Do many?
No.
Okay. All right, because I know that was, wasn't that a change of policy pretty much from 2014 to 2015?
I think it was a, you know, we look at just practices and procedures, and it was one of our practices that we did change at the high school. Is that, you know, we believe that we, we, all students should challenge themselves and the students that were in those courses, as you could see from the results, as we, you know, we did have pushback. And we did go talk to the students and went into each and every class and congratulated them on taking a rigorous course that's going to prepare them for college. And that at this point, to go and take the test, you're already winning by taking the test, the class. Now you have nothing to lose. And the year that we did that, I believe we had two students opt out.
Okay. No, I definitely support the polit, that practice, yes, makes a lot of sense. I would like to see the ACT data, you know, disaggregated to see, you know, where the, where the range are of scores and how many students and so forth. I think that'd be very interesting to see how, to measure progress over time as, as we employ these strategies.
Bill? Thank you. Nice job. Next up is the North Suburban Post-Secondary Success Consortium Joint Powers Agreement. Superintendent Kelly? Yeah.
Chair Larkin and members of the board. Tonight, this item is really kind of a joyful one for this district. For those of you that have been on the board for a longer time, you remember when I used to come to the group and saying, "We really have to start exploring early college," and with the board's blessing, we, we did that. We started exploring early college, and I have to say that we had a very strong collaborative partner in the Moundsview School District, because they were the first in the nation, really. Only Duncan came out at a point in time and said they were delivering an AA degree in a, in a, in a high school setting. And they were not competitive about it, they were collaborative with us and said, "You know what, this is hard enough to do alone and to, in order to forge forward, we should meet as a group and get a group of schools on, uh, school districts on this side of the river to collaborate." And at that time, it was six districts, so I used to come to the board and talk about the districts of six and what we were up to. And with a lot of convincing, Anoka Ramsey folded itself into that agreement with us and became a collaborative partner with not just Moundsview, but with all six of the districts. And so when we accomplished that, we sat around the table with Anoka Ramsey and the other districts and said, "What's next?" And we said, "In order to sustain this, we need to have some kind of collaboration that lets us share staff development, joint curriculum writing, shared staff, numbers of students." If we were a rural district, many times out there, if they're going to have their Spanish class or their French class or their physics class, they're, they were doing it via TV long ago. But in the metro, it's not as often seen. And so what you have before you tonight is the second step in our process. We've been talking about it for a long time, and we finally have agreed that a collaborative joint powers agreement, and the governance issue here is for the board is to actually agree and, and pass this. So it's an information item tonight, but all, one district peeled off, but we have five districts. Centennial is no longer with us on the second leg of the journey, but the five districts that are, remain very committed to one another and to our students, more importantly, that we will deliver this early college in a sustained, ongoing manner, and we will collaborate together. So what you see in front of you tonight is really addressing a more formal, formalization of that collaboration, but not meant to build another structure where there are requirements for executive directors, where there are requirements for building space, where there's requirements for ownership, but more there's requirements on participation and what's in the best interest of students. So the whole agreement really is to describe what the consortium would look like and define who the members and things would be. So if you look at Section 1, if you're following along electronically, it really talks about what the consortium organization. And then it defines who were the initial members, who would be additional members, what an executive committee would look like, what a lead member would look like. And these were all things over the years that we realized that we needed to have in place in order to function collaboratively, because as the superintendents around the table change, you want to have something that is beyond personality, but is, is, but is in the spirit of collaboration. And so we all agreed that there needed to be an annual plan that really set up activities and programs and services that would be undertaken or offered by the consortium each year, and that we pursuant to the written plan would be completed, it would be adopted by March 1st, and that the annual plan would be for a 12-month period. And it has flexibility in it in that if, if it's things that you are interested in participating in or need that particular year, then you would be writing yourself into one segment of the plan. If it was not, it's not an all-in or all-out, it's what you need on an annual basis. An example of that might be if we were short a teacher in physics and we wanted to share one one year, but weren't short the next year. That would be something that would be discussed at the table. If we were interested in developing out a course one year with Anoka Ramsey and three of us needed in, but the other two already had the course, for instance, if Moundsview had already done it, the three that didn't would be in and the two that had it would not be. But, but being very supportive of one another. What if, and Roman numeral three of the agreement, the consortium organizational description, we took three major areas and we wanted to be very specific, because we can't be the beginning and the end-all to everything. So we have a really college and career-ready, early college focus. And so it would be to maximize programs, services and activities to students and staff to promote post-secondary success for our students. Financial efficiency and leveraging of resources in order to implement programs and offer services and activities that meet the needs and the goals of individual members, and to partially or fully satisfy the requirements of the members' achievement and integration plans under the House rules and Minnesota statutes, rules and regulations. And that is because we would like to braid and co-mingle some, some funds informally that might come in in the form of integration dollars to help support the process, because this is a spending process, and Fund One, the general fund, cannot always sustain all of that. So we wanted to make sure we had the most leverage of our resources and our dollars. And so the next section really talks about membership in the consortium. And really, we, when we, we invited all in and only one declined to go in at this time. We're open to other members joining us. If they do, they just wouldn't be initial members, they would be those joining at a later time. And so I'm not going to go through every section of this, but it does talk about what the executive committee would do and what our, our rights and responsibilities are. Initial members need to designate one individual to serve on the executive committee. We need to designate or be responsible perhaps as a lead member. We need to be apprised if the consortium's annual plan is developed, and we need to participate and utilize the services, programs or activities in the annual plan at the election of each member's representative at the executive committee. And it's meant to be informal and loosely coupled, so there's no scolding involved. It's just all-in or partially in. The last part of the agreement really talks about a lead member. There needs to be one member of the consortium that's probably going to be the fiscal host if we're going to pay a bill that is going to take the responsibility for leading or hosting, organizing the consortium. And I liken to this much what we've done with Summer Academy out here for over a good many years, is that Summer Academy is made up of multiple school districts, but there's always been someone who is the financial host, in which case we are in Columbia Heights for Summer Academy. And there's been somebody that has organized, in which case we have for Summer Academy for a good many years, although we're passing the baton next year to, to somebody else. And so this lead member would be determined. It looks like just for this year that Moundsview is willing to take this on. They're a bigger school district, they have much more experience in all of this. And since they have forged the way they said they would be ready, at the ready to plow for one year, but eventually this would rotate to any and all members of, of, of the consortium. And so as far as cost and payments, the cost of the programs and the services and the activities in the budget for the annual plan shall be shared among the members based on the members' election to utilize or participate in particular programs, services and activities. And many times when we've done more formal collaboratives, it's been like, "We're going to charge you for these services anyhow, whether you're using them or not." Those were called above-the-line or membership fees. And then below-the-line are things that you really are choice. In this case, it's all choice. And so pay, you pay to play. And so if you're going to be involved in something, then we'll look at the cost and see if it's cost-effective and then proration throughout. So it's on paper, that looks a little bit easy. And then we all agree that we would pay our bills, and that's the payment section there. And then a point of contention with many of these agreements is how do you withdraw? And so when you look at the withdrawal and terminations, a member may withdraw from the consortium upon 60, 60 days' written notice to all the other members, and that the withdrawing member shall satisfy all of its financial responsibilities and other commitments up to the effective date of withdrawal. So that's meant to be no surprises for anyone, and yet it's not a lifetime commitment. So that's pretty much what the agreement is. It's been reviewed by Maggie Wallner from the Fridley School District. She helped us with, she's their attorney, draw up the joint powers agreement. And it's been reviewed by all of the districts that are entering into it to see if there was anything that was glaring or that we needed to think about. And the only thing that came back from any of the districts was, and that was, I believe, Roseville said that we needed to define what a quorum was of a membership, and we clarified that in this document. So any and all feedback has been given, given to you with this document. So we feel that it's pretty set to go. The governance question is from the standpoint of taking it to all the boards and asking them to give their blessing, which would be an action item in our particular case at the next board meeting. We, all five districts will need to sign on to this by the end of December so that we can start in January. And I pause for questions on this.
Has anyone expressed, expressed any drawbacks to doing this? I mean, it seems pretty straightforward.
We've given it a lot of thought, and we think that it's probably kind of a new frontier kind of deal. And so we're pioneering, and sometimes pioneers don't come back, but we want to think that we will. It's, you know, so I don't want to say that we have no drawbacks, we might see something out there that we haven't foreseen.
Unintended consequence.
But we have talked about this for three years now.
Okay.
And so we feel like we'd really like to take the stab, and we're hoping that, in point of fact, that if, if, if this is successful, maybe more districts would complement one another and their students in the metro area rather than try to compete with one another.
Great.
And I like how the part of the collaboration would involve teachers sharing resources, because that's the hardest part for teachers, to find the time for planning. We all know teachers are overworked and the profession calls for a lot. So whatever collaboration can help teachers share resources would be wonderful.
And we acknowledge that. And one of the things that we first started talking about was it doesn't make any sense for all of us to have a teacher in every district writing alone to develop a course when we could have two teachers from one district develop one course and two teachers from another district develop the other, and then to get feedback from the, from the districts.
Would the executive committee member, I see it's first the superintendent. Would it be then, after that, who you would designate, a superintendent would designate?
It would either be the superintendent or the designee. I would forecast that since all of the superintendents have been so intimately involved in this, that the superintendents would probably meet. And then in addition, what might happen next is that the directors of curriculum and instruction would probably meet as well to give, to serve as a sounding board and to really organize some of the lead teachers and things like that to support the plan, so.
This looks very familiar to the WEMAP model, that initial, WEMAP, WEMAP model.
The very initial one back in the 1998 and 2000, yes, you're right Ted, it reminds me a lot of that when we just all got around the table and did the work.
Hopefully we can avoid the mistakes that.
Indeed, well, you know, hindsight is 2020, so.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to our action items. Action item is campus returns of the school districts' general school board election. Don?
Good evening. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to bring you forward the resolution with the results of the general school board election that took place on November 8th.
If I get a motion in a second, then I'll read it and open it for discussion.
Second.
I need a motion first.
Oh, I'll make a motion. Second.
I'll read the resolution. Resolution to campus school board election results. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 13, state of Minnesota that is hereby found, determined and declared that the annual election of voters of this district held on November 8th, 2016, was in all respects duly and legally called and held at said election. A total of 14,849 electors of the district voted on the question of electing three directors to the Board of Education, each for a four-year term, which 5,339 voted for John Larkin, 5,059 voted for Lorian Mueller, 4,674 voted for Natty Severson, and 4,310 voted for Ted Landwear. There were 156 write-in ballots. John Larkin, Lorian Mueller and Natty Severson having received the majority of such votes are hereby declared elected. And it's been motion and second, so I'll open up for discussion.
I guess I'll ask my standard question, is there, is there any reason not to believe that these results are accurate?
No, sir.
Hearing no further questions or discussion, need a roll call vote, please.
Member Samurai?
Aye.
Member Severson?
Aye.
Member Lewis?
Aye.
Member Larkin?
Aye.
Member Palmer?
Aye.
Member Landwear, aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I also need signatures on the abstract, everyone.
Everybody has to sign, so don't leave without it or Don will be chasing you. Okay. Next up is board topics, and we have two things that were put on a list here. We had a listening session last month, I believe it was.
October 18th.
Yeah, so last month. And there was a couple people that came in and talked, asked, had some questions about some things. So we have Director Holmgren and Director Hollaby is going to discuss the, the questions that arose and the outcome.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We had two groups come to us at the last listening session.
last listening session, not tonight, but prior, and one gentleman came, and he had some concerns previously about some accessibility in Hilltop for a walking path, that Director Holmgren had addressed with the city of Hilltop. This time, he brought to our attention that other districts offer the option of children in walk zones being able to purchase riding on a bus. And so I, we brought that back to Director Holmgren, he was not at the listening session, and he is contacting districts, as well as the bus company, as well as looking at the feasibility of doing that, considering equity for students that possibly live next door and couldn't afford that amount to get on the bus. He will be bringing that back to you, once he has gotten in contact with other districts and looked at the feasibility or not of purchasing in the walk zone bus transportation. The second issue was a lady that I've been working with on a couple of issues surrounding academic lettering, and honors cord for, at graduation time, so graduating with honors. This young lady, this woman, and her young daughter, and her daughter's friend, lovely girls, came and spoke to us. They're both PSEO students. And they spoke to us about how important it was for PSEO students to still feel part of the school, of Columbia Heights High School. They gave high compliments, if I remember correctly, to Columbia Heights School District for preparing the young ladies to be career and college-ready. They had many positive things to say about the high school as well. And they just really wanted us to look deeper into grade point average that's required to academic letter versus a grade point average that you may be able to achieve at something, a institution like the University of Minnesota, and to compare and contrast that. That was one issue. The other issue was, is there some way to recognize if a student is a PSEO student, even if they might not meet the criteria, the threshold, that's in the student handbook for graduating with honors. In the student handbook, to graduate with honors, one must have taken one AP class a year. And that was set quite a while ago, as you can see, the results have been excellent, to encourage students to take AP classes for rigor and for college credit. So we, we listened, Director Stemich and myself, and Chair Larkin, and Member Landwear listened, really appreciated all of the comments from both of the parties. I did bring back to Principal Robleski, and Superintendent Kelly, of course, the requests to look at the handbook, to look at the procedures regarding lettering and graduating with honors. And I mean, I can let Principal Robleski, but since I'm on a roll, I can keep talking, you can add in if I'm missing something. Met with his admin team, talked about it, and definitely will be looking at the handbook when they go to revise it, to see, you know, and the, the family was very understanding. You have to have a threshold of a GPA for academic lettering. This district at the high school happens to be 3.67. That's, you know, the number that the, the staff had come up with and presented to the board in prior years. But that will be looked at, also be looked at, whether they would require an AP class every year in order to graduate with honors, as well as look at maybe a special recognition for students in excellent standing that are PSEO students as they graduate.
Does an AP class every year mean, on average, so they've taken four? I mean, could that be?
And that's what we're going to look at. It doesn't say that, it says one per year.
On average.
But we'll see, you know, we're, they're going to be looking at, if you want to add something, Principal Robleski, or Director Stemich. Trying to capture it in a nutshell there.
No, I think Director Hollaby stated it very well. I think at times when we have situations like this, it's always good to look back at your practices and procedures, and to see if there is a need to change.
So we were really pleased that they brought these important issues to our attention, and they're, it's in good hands with the high school administration and staff now. And as I said, Director Holmgren, I will get back to you on the blessing request.
And just to clarify, we'll still be working with the, the parties involved, and dialogue on these, particularly the PSEO one, and that when the handbook is, when and if it is changed, those will be noted. Although you don't vote on the handbooks, we would certainly tell you if we're going to change a practice or a procedure in that area. Is that correct?
Yes, we've, we've spoken to the families. I spoke to the family with the PSEO students twice. And Director Holmgren called the gentleman and said that we were, he was investigating and talking to other districts, and that we were going to be communicating back to the board.
So I'm just curious, is there a special kind of recognition when they graduate from high school, if they have been PSEO students, or if they got X number of credits through the PSEO program?
No, that was one of the family's suggestions, and was brought back to the administration for discussion.
My, my concern, and it's been my concern for a while, is the, to not disincentivize students that take PSEO and AP in any way, because they're putting themselves out there. So I, I'm glad to hear that you're, you're thinking about that.
Yeah.
And that was a piece of what they were talking about, is they felt like they weren't, you know, a part of it, and, you know, they didn't recognize them when they came in. I don't know how you fix that part, but, you know, certainly, you know, make an extra effort to make sure they're all part of the, the whole district, and they feel that way is, is important.
And of course, they're always welcome to do extracurricular activities and athletics, and one of the young ladies is very active in that area. So that's a very good point, though. We don't ever want our PSEO students, that are residents in our district, to feel like they can't have everything else involved with the high school.
And I don't believe that, they even thought that that was intentional, it just, it was a, hey, here's how we're feeling, kind of a thing, and, you know, so, it was, I don't believe it was something where they were intentionally being isolated, for sure. Anyone else, questions or comments about that?
Catching us up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for board topics?
I have a few things. I forgot to mention in my board report that I'm beginning this, the resolutions from MSBA to Superintendent Kelly, and get administration feedback as well. And if board members have any concerns, or want to change anything, please let me know, and I'll make sure those get represented. Also.
Member Landwear, when is the date of that representative assembly?
December 3rd is the actual date that we vote. December 2nd is sort of a pre-program.
Thank you.
I'm also attending the TIES annual meeting tomorrow. If you have any concerns about TIES, please let me know, I'll bring those forward. And then the third thing is, we talked about data privacy education, possibly for the board, and to find out if, you know, to have someone from MSBA come and particularly talk about, from a school board association perspective, whether data privacy resolution, allowing board members to look at personnel files if necessary, would be wise or not, and to just educate the board on that. And I, again, I'd like to renew my, my concern about that, and ask that that, that be done at some point. I know I've talked to other board members about that, and I think there's some interest in that. And then the last thing is, we talked about the article that came out prior to the election, prior, in the work session, that may have swayed the election, it was prejudicial, not intentionally. We had that discussion prior at the work session. I would like to see a policy or some sort of procedure so that does not happen again, where board members are, candidates are not mentioned in an article prior to an election, that could possibly sway an election. So that's just my ask, that we have some assurance that that doesn't happen again.
Any other board topics?
I just wanted to comment on Member Landwear's suggestion about having MSBA, representative from MSBA come in and talk to us about it. And I think that's a good idea. When we were at the MSBA training in August, and we asked the question, they were really fast, they didn't really want to get into it, and while we know where we stand on the issue of, do we want to look at staff personnel files, that's okay, you know, that, we know where we stand on it. But I feel like it is good to just get educated on where the law is relative to these issues.
Anyone else?
I'm never opposed to more education.
Okay. Hearing no further. We'll adjourn the meeting at 9:08. Thank you, everybody.